Much golf, since you're back.
Not. Nine holes. Yeah, yeah. No worries. The weather like them.
Sunday was nice.
Awesome.
Yeah, we played Riverside on Sunday. Good. I like playing there when it's uh. Not fully grown in because then I can sometimes move on because.
I was right behind you.
I saw that.
And I was talking to Holly and she's like, I just made out of my policy. My kid.
Yeah.
We have.
I saw the parish walking in the light text ring like. Come in and we'll later see. Yep, then all the parish started walking, yeah, like, okay. Yeah, perfect. I'm out of here.
That was really funny. Everybody in line was sitting.
You're number one tonight. Really? Just tired. So. So. Her brother. Did you call your mom and dad? Tree go through the garage. And they're like, hey, we're gonna do the tree. I won't be in the thing.
So I think.
And we got home and suddenly you could see the sausage. We don't need you on baseball.
Yeah. Watch.
So I saw the girls.
So. Zach, none of the dog. And then started to go with, and then it was looking like it was. They showed on Casey's years. And they're like, who just got?
Yeah.
They started to agree with it, they're like, oh, yeah, we try to save. They're fighting.
Dave Schakinger, we're using a new recording system. Can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me?
Very well.
Nice.
All right, we will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, April seventeenth, regular city of Solon council meeting. Okay, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best form.
With our civility pledge, we pledged to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Roll call Duncan, here, Parling, Gabriel, Kramer.
Yeah.
Whitehead.
Here.
Uh, next per perfecting and approving the agenda. Any changes to the agenda tonight, Kim?
No changes other than as long though that he is not able to.
Do we have a motion to perfect and approve the agenda?
Didn't you confirm that?
No, second. Right, Duncan?
Yes.
Parlinger?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right, next that takes us to citizens speak. This is a portion of the meeting where we have not shouldn't be to talk about anything not on the agenda with that. Uh, we do limit it to three minutes, but I know Mary, you're hearing, you'd like to talk.
This um. But the things are not.
You can send them up there. Yeah, you can stand behind it, either one.
Short people, you know. I added to the fact that I gave you my email I sent to you because I am the world's worst public speaker. I jump around, I confuse people, and it's just my nature. But if you read this again, you will know why I'm here. Uh, even now that I know that. As places on it, I am here to ask you to vote for the incumbent supervisors. And our little four phone supervisor, Johnson phone. That would be Roseanne Porter, Lisa Green Douglas, and Supervisor Rod Sullivan, and I will give you three reasons, two reasons why. In December, I was uh present in the room when the tip in law. I could once negotiate with the chip and the sheriff. Met a vote of two, adding and and I'm sorry, two nay and three aye. I was really surprised that anyone would vote down because I know how hard it was for my city to go so. To be able to work that through with what we can afford. Um, but a few things clicked off in my mind and I realized the three people that voted to support. Law enforcement. And set the contract that the city council would make. Were all up for election. And there was somebody running. In the election, who was going to be on a no vote. Placing us in a difficult situation in Johnson County, if we want to have law enforcement that's available throughout the county. I understand differences. These are people who are Democrats who disagree with me, and that's the nature of the party. We're, you know, same church, different religions within the church, and we believe different things. But that was a real challenge and didn't set. I added to the packet. Then also I've taken from the public website to let you know how many different things I've nine one calls made. And if you have more, maybe you break the habit. Um. How many law enforcement calls and actions are made in Johnson County? Uh, the joint. Emergency center. Communication center. And it gives you a pretty good idea of the means we need to accomplish. A lot of these I went well on. Somebody called me as a name, I might help out with more vehicle problems, but otherwise, not so much. The other problem, I mean, both definitely was. How much I've done to watch the council. It's the time when I feel represented. A lot of us feel really disenfranchised by what those are in the morning. And we just wind up having to make accommodations at home. But uh, city council will be pleased if we feel the remorse.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Thank you, girl. Oh, was there anyone that didn't sign up that would like to speak?
Yeah. Um, I'm Elaine Claude and I'm the entry manager, the food pantry manager. And um, I'm trying, we have people that are having a hard time with the stairs getting up and down the stairs. And so I'm trying to find a location that is handicap accessible. And so I'm interested in finding out whether you're going to keep the fire station and if so. If we could maybe have a location there in that big room in the back and maybe the office. Or if you possibly know any other space that may be available that we can use. Right now we need about eight hundred square feet of space. So we would like to maintain that or maybe get bigger.
No, well, we have a committee currently discussing this kind of for our building needs, both now and in the future with that. Uh, I can't give an answer right now on whether or not that's something that we could do, but we will definitely keep this in mind. Um, with that, and just thank you for running that and for all that you do.
I think that's very important, to make sure it's truly accessible. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Getting harder and harder for some of our.
Absolutely.
And even us carrying the heavy box, you're putting down the step. You know, when you get donations and stuff, so. Yeah, so um, is there something more that I need to provide you guys or will you let me know?
I think it's something that knowing this is an issue as we discuss building needs on whether it's in the community center and the bolt fire station where where there's something that we'll keep in mind as we. Make decisions and everything moving forward. So I think.
And have a lanes contact information. We've spoken, so I can relay anything the council would like me to share.
And if these are permanent, that would be great. You know, so we don't have to move and then move again.
We'll definitely be in touch.
Alright, thank you for what you do.
All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. So we have the approval of minutes from the special meeting on April third. The regular meeting on April, April third, the approval of list of bills, treasures, reports and transfers, building permits, which we do have. One on there and the Big Grove event. I believe this is the portion of the cyclists coming into town.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
No, second. Duncan?
Yes.
Parlinger?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright. Public Works Director report, Scott?
Oh, Tom and Chris been a test, mowing has been full swing. Especially after the budget rainfall we've been getting. Sledge hauling started on Monday out of the wastewater plant for the application of the bio solids. And uh. We picked up, Chris went and got the six herky bases. So we'll be getting those installed here. We have to have them in before, or my plan is they have them in before the twenty sixth. But they're. Getting s- getting mounted with the herky on.
May third.
May thirty, yes. But, or April three, April three, April. Um, we also started construction of the dugouts on fields three and four, and while we started. Some of that. Um, work is now underway on resurfacing fields one and two. One actually got completed. Um, and what a difference. Just that made because we had two inches of rain last night and they're down there playing ball on it tonight. Never had that before. Um, dog park equipment has been installed. Uh, we still got a little concrete and four. And we, Tom completed um. Grass treatments, try to control the undesirable weeds that that are out there. Um, we're going to do another round of that and Kami is organizing a grand opening in June. Um, JDM Concrete completed um. Some concrete work and down at the library, and this has to do with ADA accessibility from the parking lot. Uh, where the ADA. Spaces were for parking uh was not compliant. For uh, for somebody with a handicap because of the slope where where they parked. So we're actually moving them down where where the slope is compliant and. So some work had to be done to the concrete walk. So that started Monday and uh. We'll have to re-strike the parking lot. We'll be working on that also.
Well, I know. Alright. Thanks, Scott. Alright, now, next the city engineer report, Dave.
Yes, good evening. A few things to go over. So out at Trail Ridge, they've been working on finishing up the utility installations. They have the sewer installed. They finish up water. They've been working on testing the sewer here. At least until that rain yesterday, that kind of slowed things down a little bit on site. Uh, they'll have storm sewer and subdrain to install yet and then put the gravel down and pave. So uh, most of the utility work is done. That one's moving along pretty quickly. Uh, we did get the next phase, a very small phase that we're reviewing on Trail Ridge, part three to the south. So working on getting comments on that. Chablon Elm, Scott, and a few folks from our office did a walk through today to put together a punch list on that water main installation project, a few cleanup items, but overall that's pretty close to. Being complete. Um, there's a small street repair where we put the alley sewer in, the sewer manhole. On the street to add a little bit of settlement, so some work to do around that. Uh, we're trying to coordinate that with some of the other cleanup work we're doing in town. Uh, we've been reviewing, uh, or working on updating the GIS mapping, working with Scott to get that to the vendor with some of the new developments that we have in and also just in general cleanup where there were some minor differences. And then on the wastewater plant, I've been working with the equipment vendors as they put together their packages for proposals on the various uh. Equipment that we'll need for that new plant. So that's what we've been working on.
Alright, thanks, Dave. Kevin?
We've got a couple of agreements. I guess ordinance later, I can talk about that when we get to that point.
Alright. Uh, be not able to join, we will move down to new business. Uh, the community center lease renewal, Kami?
Thank you. Uh, the community center lease is an annual lease. For the past few years, we know that there is a going to be a time at which the school is ready to demo that facility. That time is not now. Uh, they're telling us they're at least a few years out. We have since twenty twenty have been on an annual um lease program with them. This lease is the same lease we've had for the last two to three years where we pay a fee during the school year and then um. A lower fee during the summer months because we're just not in using the building as much during those months. Um, the, so this lease runs from April first until March thirty first next year, twenty twenty five. Um, the one change is you'll recall that last fall, Jordan Creek Church came and asked you some of those T wings classrooms. And we have removed those from our lease a few years ago after COVID and we put those back in because they are using those for the fuse programs on Wednesday nights. So we had an amendment to the last year's lease, so I just incorporated that amendment in this lease, and those room numbers are included specifically which ones the school has granted. Um, permission for cues to use. And then we have, the city has a separate agreement with Jordan Creek Church. That, you know, establishes what their responsibilities are for the spaces that they'll use. So this is the uh annual uh community center lease between the city Solon and Solon schools.
Wait, questions or comments?
Everything is cool with Jordan Creek in terms of being, you know, responsible tenants. Everything seems like it's gone really well, right? I would have to say from what I've heard, yes, um, I think what we recognize is that. The cost to heat and cool the building is astronomical. And it doesn't work without Jordan Creek, the school and the city all working together. To keep the building functioning as long as it's providing a community need, that's really. That's, and I know that um Brody works closely with the pastor there and their staff. To make sure it all works, you know, as smooth as possible, and I think everybody's trying to do their best, and there's a real sense of a cooperative spirit with Jordan Creek. And I think that's one of the keys to the success. So we appreciate that.
Very cool.
We have a motion to approve the lease renewal. I'm hoping to approve the. Now, sir. Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Next, uh, the fire agency clerk contract.
This is also an annual contract. Uh, the city of Solon, uh, AKA Suzie provides the need, the clerk services to the fire agency. She's done this since the um, since the agreement, since the agency was formed in two thousand sixteen. This is the duty that she performed before the agency when it was a city department, so it's something she was familiar with. Uh, there, this does take a certain amount of her time. We then bill the agency quarterly for the hours. She does keep a timesheet of those hours. With the recent wage adjustment, we want to make sure that um they are covering the costs of her time in this agreement. Get cut, this agreement covers that wage adjustment that went into place in January. And then we'll do, so typically these run fiscal, so we'll do another one um in July, but this will cover us from January to July of this year. Um, and the hourly rate. Thirty-five sixty-five. And this has already been approved by the agency right then.
Yep. Yes. I can say, we appreciate the heck out of you, Suzie, for everything that you do, uh, both at the city and with the agencies. Almost to approve the fire agency clerk contract.
Awesome.
Alright, Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright. It takes us down to resolution twenty-four fifteen, uh, street closure. Uh, this is for the weekend warrior event that we discussed at the last uh council meeting. Kim, anything else?
Well, there, this is um the event that they are basically closing off the section of Iowa Street right there beside Big Grove, similar to when Big Grove has their um anniversary event. So something that we're um. Familiar with, uh, the date is Saturday, May twenty fifth, for that weekend warrior event.
But it's graduation weekend? Back in before that, I mean, the weekend before that. Sunday, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it if it's graduation weekend.
What they. Who's going to get it first?
Everybody.
So, um, graduation is usually the Sunday before Memorial Day weekend.
Should that be the nineteenth?
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah. Very cool. I'll move to approve resolution twenty-four sixteen, street.
I'll second.
Wait, I said it wrong.
Fifteen, right?
Yep, I'll move to approve resolution twenty-four fifteen, street closer for Weekend Warrior event.
I'll second. Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright, takes us down to resolution twenty-four sixteen, uh, street closure. This is for the Big Grove event on June twenty ninth, uh, the same.
Same section of street, yeah. Same scenario.
Any questions or concerns?
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty-four sixteen. I'll second.
Alright, Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright, takes down to resolution twenty-four seventeen, uh, setting the wage. So this is a resolution setting the wage for the finance officer position, Travis Schmidt. Kami, any comments?
So uh, this is for the um finance officer position. Travis Schmidt was um hired and his first day was a week ago. He was one week today. Um, uh, things are going really well. Uh, he has a great aptitude for this type of work. He's very conscientious, asks a lot of questions, and we've really enjoyed having him on. Get to know him, having him in the office the last week or so. So this just is required action for any new position. Um, so a resolution is required.
Questions, comments?
I will move to create resolution number twenty-four seventeen.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us down to ordinance number four eighty-three. This amending chapters fifty and sixty-nine for parking regulations.
I can go ahead and do this. Um. This ordinance, especially the sixty-nine point oh nine, basically said that. Between ten PM and six AM, note, nothing within engine. Auxiliary engine, air compressor, refrigerator, and other. Device with a truck could not, could not be, uh, they cannot be operated at that time. So it also would, the ordinance was too. Broad because of theory or the violation if you start, if you start your car in the winter, your truck out in the winter, it's just warm it up for yourself, in theory you're violating this. Ordinance. So both this chapter fifty, which is the nuisance section, and the uh. And the sixty-nine point oh nine, which is the uh, talks about the trucks, we basically made it into a uh. Made it into a reasonable person, so the sound is, so the sound, a person could come out and uh. There's a complaint can go out and see if they could hear it from, you know, off the property and everything like that. So it basically what I've put in there is uh. Is a reasonable person with normal sensitivities. So there are, there are always instances where people who live in. You know, near people live in apartments where the, the sounds that apartment complexes makes or any, any sounds that are in the, in the. Near the area where they're living, they uh cause them an issue, but the problem is. Uh, when you live in the city and you have neighbors that some of that stuff has to be uh, has to be allowed here. So what, what I've done here is tried to be. Tried to uh. The nuisance section means you can, you have to hear from fifty feet away, so the sheriff can come out there and say, okay, stand fifty feet away from the property, can I hear it? And, and uh, and then also it has to be an unreasonable sound. Uh, and then in the truck section, it's sort of a similar thing, except. I wanted to, I, I did put a cap of thirty minutes, continuous minutes on there because we also have had issues with, you know, people, sometimes with semi-drivers, they want to leave their. Truck on all night because that's when it's cold out, we don't want to have that happen either. So this was kind of a uh. Compromise to uh allow some of these noises because of the, the way it was written before, none of the noises were allowed. I think that was just an oversight in the way it was written. And then, second of all, there's still, there's still a standard that the sheriff can go out there and look at and say, okay, should I? You know, know that. I mean, we had this situation, everybody knows where, where we'd have the sheriff come out there, talked to one of them a couple of weeks ago, and they said. It was the same sound as somebody starting their car engine. So. Technically, the way the ordinance was written, it said any noise, period. It didn't say, didn't say reasonable, it didn't say, we're here to hear it fifty feet away. So. This is just giving some more standards and allowing some reasonable noises to occur. Because we do live in a city and uh, there are noises that are going to happen.
And as far as whose judgment of what's reasonable and unreasonable, would that be the deputies?
The deputies, and I, I mean, that's a standard that there's a reasonable person standard in the law regarding, you know.
There's a definition.
I mean, yeah, it's a case by case basis, but the judge would, you know. You know. Somebody, you know, warming the car, fine, it's, that would be, that would not be unreasonable, but you know, somebody uh. Somebody playing loud music, stuff like that, that. That you could hear more than fifty feet away, that wouldn't be reasonable. So there, there is a standard the courts use. Lots of criminal laws have, and civil laws have reasonable person standards. So. Try to, try to put it that way and uh. So that there, there is still some uh regulation of it, but it's also with a reasonable standard in there that we're not having to complain every time there is any noise.
So that would, that would fall under to say, I'm a, I own a stock car and I'm working on it and it's extremely loud and. Kami does not like the noise coming from next door. With that, that would be something where.
It only buys ten to six, ten PM to six AM. The other, that would need to start up all the time, so in theory, yeah.
Okay, so idling car versus working on.
Yeah, you know.
Is this, is this street vehicles or is this?
The nuisance part is any noise is something you could have, you know.
So the one thing I, I guess I want to make sure that we're not, uh, our, like our feed mills in town, their, when their dryers are running. You know, during, during dryad season.
That's dumb, I mean.
That's not going to be affected by that, okay.
Cause this is a.
I just want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Mostly just for vehicles.
I'll, I'll double check, there's, there's an exception for, as a, it's a business, that's a lot of ground, so. I'll make sure, I, I think it's already in there, I'll double check to make sure the next time we go reading. Okay, I think that was one of the arguments we had about the uh, situation we had going, that.
Sure.
Where's, where it's loud, where it's loud, you're there, it's just. Right, yeah, I'm going to be getting some unusual complaints, we can bring it further.
Yeah, shouldn't. Uh, if the council wants to move forward with this amendment, should we make the motion contingent that existing businesses?
Should be a first reading.
I'll, before we come to the next one, I'll make sure if it's not there, I thought it was there, I'll double check.
Okay.
So if I do it the first time, I'll make sure to double check the next time we have a second reading, and then if I think we need to have more protection in there, I'll make sure it's in there.
Okay.
Sixty-nine is only applies to trucks.
Trucks, alright, okay.
The other one is.
Any.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh, any questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Uh, do we have a motion for the first reading of ordinance four eighty-three?
I'll move to approve ordinance forty-three.
I'll second. Duncan?
Yes.
Parley?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright, takes us down to all their business. Uh, so streets. Any updates on?
Um. Mr. Kramer. What is a good time for you after your work schedule?
Yeah, any time after four.
Okay. I'll get something to you. I know, any day work better?
Any day.
And I know you're very open.
Like, like a book. All right, it's like no update on utilities, finance personnel?
I just received the, the TEP application here. I just received a TEP application. So I will be reaching out to the finance committee about your availability to meet next week. So look for an email.
Personnel, no update, building needs, no update. We will keep in mind with the comments that we had with the food pantry. Since we have updates on that, the police committee, we will be meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. And city school, no updates on that meeting.
Tim, not my notes from that meeting, but we, what we agreed to do to meet again before school's out, but no meetings.
I mean, Tim Brown hadn't reached out as well. I'm saying he felt like we are overdue for a joint meeting. I think it's been quite a while. And so Kami and Davis will be working to coordinate a joint meeting between us and the school board. So it's been quite a while. Next, Suze? Kami?
Just wanted to remind everybody that next Wednesday, we will have a special meeting to approve the budget. That will be at five thirty here. Now, should be the, we'll have a public hearing and then a resolution to approve the agenda. And though there'll be all the things on which we do the agenda.
Next Wednesday, yeah. I will be, I can call in for it, but probably see if John would run it. I'll be in coaching baseball at Riverside. I'll be here.
As long as we have free, yeah. So as long as we're screwing, and you don't count.
All right. The roast is over, we'll move on to.
We, last night, Dan, Andrew and Kami and I went down to Iowa City to look at the. Get a sneak peek at some of the herkies and they looked pretty cool. So we're excited to have a few of them here in town. And, and got a chance to get a look at a couple of them. So. It's a pretty, pretty cool operation they got going on.
We'll have, Scott, did you say six bases that we're putting up? It was cool, the. Schools, herky was there, as cool as a local artist. So. My soul and craft.
Freshen my memory where they're going to be. Sure. So one location is up in front of the bandstand. Another location's going to be right across the street in the east from Big Grove on the bump out. One's going to be at the sheriff's substation. One is going to be at the community center entrance. One will be at the library and then one is going to be at the entrance to SR, SRNA.
Okay, cool. Pretty cool that we.
Yeah, it is.
Any other council comments?
You know, I, I have a question. Are, are you guys aware that the S has gone on Solon, up north into town? Well, it's not there. It's gone, Don? Or is it not lit up? During the day, it looks like it's gone.
Boy.
And we came back from Sunlips the other day and barbazzled why the S was gone. And I looked over it.
What day was that?
Well, it was this week.
Where is it at night?
No, it's during daytime. Yeah, I fixed it last week. Okay, well, maybe we were seeing things, just a thing. We didn't have any to drink, so nothing left. The light was out, yeah. So the S was, were dark. Yeah, last Wednesday. Yeah.
But it's gone?
Yeah, you may well look at it again, but. So I pulled it off. To get, see what the light was behind it. I just dropped it in my hand after unscrewing it. I had two mice drawn up my arm. And I had six more to drop out. And that entire S was one very big mouse net.
Oh, my God.
And so there's LED modules, learned a new term. I call them LED strip lights, but evidently. And. They had chewed every one of those up. Wiring, modules, there's also bullet holes through it. So you literally take it off. So I had to literally take the S off. How long was it off? It was off for a day. This week. She even had me stop so she could look around, see if it was laying on the ground somewhere. I mean, I'm not, I don't think I'm making this up. And I went up there and made the look at it. Yeah, the S is like boom, brilliant. And then everything else is. Well, that's, that's when I learned that there's difference between LED strip lights and LED. All right, enough light.
All right, with that, mayor comments? I, I don't have any on that. Do we have? I can't talk about. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?